Individuals who are willing to bring on students from our schools as apprentices so that they can learn other things other than what we do well is carpentry and the cafeteria program because those are two things everybody's got to eat. And I mean, besides gardeners, I think carpenters are the biggest group of individual businessmen and women on this island. So it's that difficulty of size, but I do know that our district is doing amazing things, and especially by connecting with the individuals in the community, which is what makes our education system so great.
Thank you, Rob. Next question was, I think there was one further back. No? Okay, go ahead.
I'm not in practice, I won't stand up. I just wondered.
Could you stand up, please?
Well, no, I'm not in practice. Not a good idea.
I'm wondering, I'm not a teacher, I have taught, but I'm not a teacher. Is it the role of this school district, of the trustees, to assess student outcomes academically, like extracurricular, in the carpentry program, cafeteria, hairbrushing, those programs? Who assesses the student outcomes as compared to other school districts in the province? Is this school particularly good in science, but not so good in languages? I don't know. I don't touch it in this system. But I'm wondering, is this the role of the trustees, or is it a role that doesn't come in somewhere else within the system, this evaluation?
Yeah, that might be an interesting question for some candidates. Would you like to tackle that one? Rob, maybe you should, as a city trustee.
I'm happy to. If I, I think I understand your question. So in any program, teachers are involved in evaluating students. There are provincial assessments in some areas. Overall, in terms of achievement in general and how the district is doing, we have what's called an achievement contract. So the superintendent, probably in this district with a team of people, would take all the data in terms of achievement, and I know the goals that have been set for the district are based on the results of that data. So is the achievement of students a conversation and a discussion of the board? Yes, because the board would review the achievement contract, the board would have a look at the data. For example, in the first goal of the achievement contract in Gulf Islands is to improve foundational skills in math and literacy. So, great goal with lots of data to support that, to show that it should be a goal. And so there is an onus on the board to ensure that programs are put in place to support those goals. It's not necessarily meaning that there's a deficiency, but it's chosen as a goal for a certain reason, and usually in relation to that data. So then, yes, the board would make some decisions and say, we need to put our money into reading recovery, which is an early reading program for non-readers, or into some point in time for math support, for example, if it were a numeracy goal. So, I'm not sure, is that answering your question a bit? Teachers do a lot of assessment, of course. There are some provincial assessments, and the board looks at those results in terms of the school goals, the school and district goals.
I was thinking, so I just think that outcomes have to be evaluated against other districts. I wasn't sure if that was your role or was something embedded somewhere else. I think it's an important, an important role.
Okay, Rob?
So, I would say it's the superintendent's job to use the data that's created by provincial standardized testing and by our graduation rates to ensure that we are performing as we should be on a provincial scale. Ranking schools is a very contentious issue because it's not easy. I can't even, I mean, I would say that the name of that company that does it, but I can't even remember, and maybe that's because they're the company that should not be named. Do you know which report it is? Does anyone know? Shout it out from the audience if you know. Fraser Institute!
It's an F-word.
They rank the schools, and it is a bane of your existence because there's, you can be within, you know, you change 1%, you've gone down the list a million places, and you're the worst school in the world. And that's not how we want to treat our students, but we do want to make sure that they're always improving. I'll say that I just happened to look at this, talked to the middle school students, and so I'll probably not get it right, but it says in the school act that the board is responsible for improving student achievement. So although we leave it up to our superintendents to do that, and the amazing staff that we hire, if we fail you, I mean, it's those people that you elect as board trustees that you can then, you know, set on fire or do whatever.
John, let Ken.
Yes, Rob, right. The school act clearly holds boards accountable for student achievement within the district. And the board governs accordingly and then delegates responsibility to operations through their superintendent. And one of those reports, as you mentioned, was the achievement contract. I think even above that, the board needs to have visions and goals that can clearly assess where are the areas that are important to develop. Is it the STEM, is it science, technology, engineering, math? Is it arts? Is it recreation? I mean, these things are all important, and the question is, how do we define and measure student achievement is a complex question, but it's one that needs to ultimately be answered by the board at the top level and work down through there. Specifically, one of the examples from the achievement is we, I think we had around a 65% completion rate for grads within the achievement, and I think we should be around a 90% range. I looked into that, and it seems that there's anomaly with some of the database in terms of what, and it's the old garbage in, garbage out. So the numbers were skewed, and that doesn't really reflect the actuals. But that's just one example, I think a fundamental example that we can all look at, how many people can make it K through 12 and successfully complete the school program.
Thank you, John. Ken?
Just a couple of comments. If we'd been listening to the Fraser Institute, who appeared to have been whispering into Christie Clark's ear, our schools would be all private or charter schools, and we'd be looking at this huge saving of money for the government. We would not be looking at a strong, viable, healthy public education system. One comment I'd like to make, when I first came to the board here, from secondary school principal in Ontario, I was very interested in the high school programs, and I went to visit some forward-looking high schools elsewhere, as well as this one, in Vancouver. And I was excited about what was happening in grades, from grades nine to 11. But I was horrified to see what happened to these schools in grade 12. Suddenly, the provincial exams came up, tests, the teachers stopped doing the exciting stuff and started to teach to the questions on those tests. It was a shame. It seemed to me that the whole grade 12 experience was clamped down because of these provincial tests. I don't care for them, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I will say, as a, 35 years as a college/university professor, I have an opinion too on high school student achievement, but I'll keep it to myself. Nice question, it's right here.
So this is a question for those of you who have served as school trustees before as superintendent. Could you give an example of a time when you, in your role as school trustee or superintendent, spoke up publicly to advocate for increased funding for public education?
Rob?
I'm not the board chair, so I've never spoken up publicly for, you know, for this district. I participate as a member of the BCSTA, and the BCSTA passes resolutions annually asking for increased funding. And I believe that the association works hard to ensure that the funding that comes to the district is maximized, well, not just to this district, but to all districts. It's an interesting thing how the changes that were made to make education equal for all districts made things a bit more difficult for each district when funding and taxation was taken away from local boards. We all go cap in hand to the school, to the ministry, and ask for our fair share. For the most part, that's all then, you know, put in per-student funding, and it's the Minister of Finance that decides how much the Ministry of Education gets, which then decides how much they can give to each and every school and student. I do believe that the best way for us to stand strong and together as school board trustees is through the BCSTA, and I believe that their advocacy is on record and will continue as saying more funds are needed in public schools.
Nancy?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer this question. It's a tough one for superintendents, given their role. They are staff, and they do sit around the board table. The senior staff meet with the board, and it is the board that makes the decision to advocate for funding. So in my experience, I was very much in a position to be advising the board in educational matters and where we were needing funding. When we were making budget decisions, we would advise the board on how to manage that. And also, writing letters on behalf of the board, it was our job to do that. So in my experience, I spent quite a bit of time writing letters to government for the board chair, he signed those letters, on his direction. And so we would have a relationship whereby the senior staff and the board would discuss programs, services, budgets, where the board wanted to take those decisions and what kind of noise they wanted to make with government. And it would be then, in my case, as a superintendent, as a member of staff, to be involved in that process, but not to initiate it. So in this, in this role, should I be elected, I would be in a position to be more part of that decision to engage in the advocacy. I have often supported the board chair in those deliberations, as I mentioned, on other issues with the Minister of Education, the deputy minister, though. So I often came prepared with the arguments that we would have. So it's very much a collaborative role, but ultimately, it is the board that does make that decision to begin an advocacy process with the government.
Thank you, Nancy. Would anybody else like to respond to this?
Well, yes, it's a good question. It's a political issue for sure, and as Nancy has said, it's up to the board chair, with the support of the board, to go necessary to the Ministry of Education, to go to your local MLA, and make a strong case for more funding for the Gulf Islands School District. It's a political move, and it's really, our chief politician is the chairman of the board, in this case, May Mackenzie.
John, do you have a comment?
I can't answer that question because I have not served as a trustee or superintendent. I would say that it would be great to see some representation at the Standing Committee for Finance for the provincial government to have our concerns held, at least at that level.
Thank you, John. Next question, Stan.
Okay. I've also served in school boards in the past, but I was wondering, and I guess I'll direct quote, so anyone feels I could answer it. See, other than, actually, it's a big other, other than the financial advocacy, in terms of programs, in terms of community initiatives, can we think of things that the board has done in a proactive way as opposed to merely reacting to the superintendent's initiatives? Or would you argue that proactive, actually, board in terms of program is inappropriate?
You stand? Who would like to start?
I don't mind starting. I think it needs to be a consensus model. I think that we all need to get together as a community and decide what is the best thing to do. If the board says, this is what you're going to do to make this happen, well, first of all, we need our staff to help us figure out whether it's even worth doing. So I don't, I wouldn't say that the board isn't proactive, but at the same time, I think that we have to do consultation to ensure that we're effective when we think of something. An example that the board has done that has increased funding into this district, and it was before I became a trustee, was starting the Saturna Ecological Education Centre, which brings 12 high school students to Saturna, and that actually makes money for the district. It more than pays for the project itself, and it was supported by the Saturna community. They said, we don't have any high school kids on this island. Kind of sucks to just be a bunch of old people standing around. We'd like some weird kids here. Can you do that for us? And we said, yes. We figured out a way to do it through creative, you know, finding a creative staff that could be the principal for that program, and then working with the community to fundraise to build three buildings, and then find students across this province that will come and spend three days in the wilderness. You know, they camped out to begin with because the buildings weren't done yet. That's how desperate they were to be in the middle of nowhere, Saturna. Well, I love it there. I wish we could have all our meetings there. We should have had this there. We could have flown everyone over to Saturna for this meeting. So it is, it's, in the end, it comes down to consensus building and being effective with your decision-making as a board.
Well, Nancy?
And I fully agree with the notion of consensus, and that's critically important that we have to be team players as trustees and senior staff. On the note of initiating creative ways to generate revenue, for example, I was very involved when we had a field services review, and this goes a long way back. But one of the field services people actually became our superintendent here for a while doing Sutherland. But that was the time when we initiated, on their recommendation, the DL, well, we called it the DLPP at the time, and I think the acronym is slightly different now, but bringing homeschoolers into the district for a lot of outstanding reasons, and this was to create a partnership with the homeschooling community and benefit from the government funding that that provided both the district and the homeschool families. And that's been expanded in a variety of ways. The SLCs on the Outer Islands, that was initiated at that time as well, because a student on Pender generates more money than a student at GISS in grade 11 and 12. So those are, those are the kinds of things that, the creative things that the board decided to do at the time and has continued to explore, and I think that can be explored even more. I think the board, you know, I go back to the four-day-a-week decision. That was a tough decision, but it was a decision made beyond just, you know, advocating for the government to give us more money. Let's embrace the options, the possible, what are the possibilities? And we explored all kinds of things, bringing the independents on board, going to the Outer Islands and accessing that funding. As a trustee, I'll put all those cards on the table and say, let's talk about all this. Let's talk about school calendar. Are we maximizing funding? Let's talk about school configuration. That's a silent one right now, but that's really, really important and has been done many, many times in the past. Let's have those conversations.
Thank you, Nancy. John?
Thanks, Earl. I can think of an example, it's slightly controversial, but it's the opening of, taking over Windsor House School in North Vancouver, and the, it's a unique model, and I think it's, we're the only district that actually has a school outside of our district boundaries. And it's, no, there's other examples? Great. So that's an initiative that was really, in my, it was quite forward-thinking in terms of the board taking on a school that wasn't working very well in another district and then bringing it into, under our wings, and it seems that it is working. There was talk about consultation. I didn't hear the consultation on that issue. I could have, I could have just not been paying attention, and I apologize for that if that's the case. But that's, those are the, those are the kind of initiatives that the board can look, and they can be groundbreaking, and that's one example.
Thank you, John. Just like to say that we have 20 minutes left, and to allow as many people as possible, we'll go back to the usual format of allowing one minute per answer, okay, for change. Well, Ken, you had to speak.
I'd just like to mention that I think trustees are in a position to be able to think outside the box and to bring these ideas to the board for their discussion and consideration. For example, I'm really interested in community education and the retraining of people that live in this community that are either beyond grade 12 and need retraining opportunities. This happened in my jurisdiction when I was principal of St. Catherine's Collegiate. There was suddenly became a lot of federal money available for retraining. So we put our heads together with the board, and we came up with a program to retrain women who'd left the workforce at a time when they were typewriters and white-out, raise their families. Their families were gone, and they wanted to go back in the workforce, but they were totally unfamiliar with word processing. We used federal money to open computer labs in our schools. We paid teachers to teach them, and those women, we had a 95% placement rate. These women are now running St. Catherine's. They had no confidence. They said, we couldn't possibly compete with these younger women that are applying for jobs. They could, and they were highly valued. It was a very successful program using federal money for retraining.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, trying to keep the answers now to a minute, and we'll see how far we can get, okay? All right, let's, before we get into people asks, the second question, I'd like to allow anybody who hasn't had one yet at the back there.
The B.C. Public Schools Employers Association is the accredited bargaining for the province's public boards of education, negotiating with BCTF for provincial collective agreement issues. If you were to be elected as a trustee, what input would you have provided, that association your agent, in the recent labor struggle? If you're an incumbent trustee, what did you accomplish?
Would you like to start with Rob?
I don't mind starting. Just a little bit of history on that. We did have a director of BCPC, Pete from Pender, and was it just last summer, or I guess the summer before, he was fired. All trustees were fired from that board. We've been kicked out. They don't want to hear what we have to say. They allowed two trustees to sit in on the meetings just to see how it was going, and they were designated through the BCSTA. So, that's a tough question. I'm married to a teacher. I'm not allowed to go to those meetings when they were allowed to go either because it's called conflict of interest. But, so yeah, I'll just, I guess, provide that back part and then say, yeah, conflict of interest, because obviously I'd be asking for more money through, to fund the education, contracts or otherwise.
And I can just reiterate that, yes, the firing of the board was shocking and unheard of, and we were all quite surprised about what happened at BCPC. As the bargaining agent, it wasn't any longer. Let's just pretend they had remained intact with their group. We would have said, let's get on with this, let's negotiate. We need to be negotiating. There's no negotiating happening here. And in fact, I wrote a lot of letters that said that, and they went wherever they went. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pat myself on the back right now, and Debbie, you know this, because I told you even before the settlement came down with the teachers. Everything on that list was what I had thought in my own mind, what government should do. Double the lift, change the bonus, which was actually a grievance resolution, but it worked out to exactly the number that I expected it to be. So everything that they came to could have been done back in June or May if people had just sat down and consulted and talked and negotiated.
Thank you, Nancy. Ken?
The formation of BCPC in 1996 was a black eye for public education in this province, a disgrace, and the sooner it stopped, the better. I know a lot of trustees, some of whom live on this island, who got so discouraged because of BCPC that they dropped out of the business of being school trustees. It made a travesty of our jobs as trustees. And one day, I hope that we'll have a government that has the guts to address that reality and put negotiations back where it should be with BCSTA.
John?
The, yeah, I think having a board, having a reinstated board would be, would have been nice to have some voices rather than one appointed person on that board, but get to the table to negotiate a settlement, work on it. The kids are depending on, the teachers are depending on everybody, the general public are depending on a resolution. It's easy to look back, 2020 hindsight is always easy, and to, I can make a comment on what I thought at the time, but whether that would have been the right thing now, looking back and the facts, I'm not so sure. I mean, there was a lot of voices for arbitration, to settle the dispute through arbitration, and I think that would have had a lot of merit. I think that around Labor Day, the parties were very close, and there would have been a real potential to actually have Vince Reddy or somebody appointed as an arbitrator just to bring those points home, and we could have saved a lot of unrest through the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, John. Next question. Go ahead.
My question is just directed to Nancy. In your opening remarks, you said when you first became principal here that it was a mess, there was an $800,000 deficit. I'd like to know, what did you do to alleviate or work down that deficit?
And I didn't add that it worked. The board met with the minister of the time, and the government covered that cost, covered the $800,000. So we had a lot of attention in our district about it. We had, as I mentioned, the student protest, we had a number of visitors to the Gulf Islands about the issue, and our board chair and board members were talking with the minister, and it worked. It worked. The loud voices worked that time. Later, when the board made the decision to go to the four-day-a-week, we weren't being as successful at that time in getting the government to listen and to provide us that funding.
Thank you, Nancy. That question was addressed to Nancy alone, so, okay, I guess this is the second time, or rather, go ahead. Yep, and then, over there.
Well, I'll introduce myself this time. I'm Carol Arnold, and I'm a teacher in this high school. I think, I'm feeling, I don't know why, but I'm feeling some anxiety. I'm feeling anxiety, you know, four years, you're going to be elected for the next four years. Our collective agreement for teachers will not be renegotiated for another four years. And if there was one thing this strike did, was it brought a tremendous amount of knowledge about what's wrong with the way the government is funding schools. And in fact, if anything, I had a sneaky suspicion the government was wanting to end those, end the strike really fast because people were getting too smart. There's a lot of momentum, and you know, we've gotten into the, we're in a little bit of a lull right now, but there was a lot of momentum around focus on the relationship of the government to education in this province. So my anxiety is that we are now, you're our political agents here, we're electing you. We're electing you to be guardians of public education here and spokespersons for all of us. And so I, we've all been talking around money, we've been talking around funding, but I'd like to know before I leave here tonight, what is your but I'd like to know before I leave here tonight, what is your commitment to maintain this momentum, to doing what needs to be done to keep the spotlight on the fact that we're, in this province, $1,000 below the average, national average for, for funding of children. In this district, that would translate into $1,700,000 more dollars. So all these little things that we do here and there, the math I pulled down, it still has the Soviet Union on it, those sorts of things would be toast, they'd be yesterday. So what commitment have you got towards this, I think, paramount question about getting that funding, being an advocate to make sure that public education is really funded, and it's not PACs, and it's not private corporations that were boycotted, that it's funded the way it should be funded, by this government?
Who would like to start? One minute each.
Well, I think you know where I stand. I'm certainly running because I was horrified by the way this government treated our teachers during these last round of negotiations. I don't ever want to see that happen again, and I say that the trustees of British Columbia have to stand up and be counted, and I'm prepared to do that.
John?
I, I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's around the year 2006 when we started dipping below the national average of support to education, and this is just a continuing trend. It's deeply concerning, and it's, it's going to create a lot of difficulties. It's not only in the funding, but it's also in, in the increase in hydro rates that, that schools are going to have to pay. And I think it's, without repeating myself, having a strategy and a communications plan to be vigorous advocates for our education dollars, to get that conversation out there and build public support. I think the, the board can do a lot of advocacy work, but ultimately, it's going to take our citizens, who are already stressed in many ways, to, to get on board as well and, and ultimately make their voices heard. The, there's an interesting article that, that came out about the shock doctrine and comparing what happened with the teacher's strike, and I think there's a level, level of raising awareness there that we need to try to keep the momentum going.
Any other comments? Rob?
I think that's a good question for your MLA. I, I, I will continue to ask at any opportunity that someone asks me whether public education needs further funding, but when it comes down to it, the funding of education has been moved to the provincial bodies, and the B.C.S.T.A., as I said, advocates on an annual basis in front of the finance committee and asks for increased funding, and I support all the work they do. Our board supports all the work they do, and I will continue to do that. But it is now a provincial matter as to how much money education gets in, and until there's a change in our government from the Liberals to another party, I, I, I share the same anxiety as you, and I, I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to say that I can do more, because after six years, I know that it's going to be like banging your head against a wall. We'll do our best, and we will advocate.
Thank you, Rob. I might add that part of the solution might be to ensure that young people vote.
Yes.
I think it-
Next question.
Oh, Nancy.
Why, thank you.
Pardon me.
I, I think I have not too much to add to what's been said. I agree that the B.C.S.T.A. can continue, and they do a very good job of advocating, and I think that needs to continue. I'm not sure a change of government is going to make a lot of difference, but many of you may disagree with me, but I've been around that block before as well. I think, I, I'm an appreciative person. I like to work with what I have and do the very best and the most creative things and be brave about what we can do with what we have. And I also think that as we continue to advocate, because I do believe we have a flawed funding formula, and a very good friend and secretary treasurer I happen to know is on a committee to reevaluate the, the funding formula, and we, we know that the certain districts are disadvantaged, and that needs to change, and we should, we should advocate for that. But on top of that, we need to move beyond just talking about the money and talk about great programs for kids.
Thank you, Nancy. Question there and there, and I think that'll probably be it, and well, we'll try to squeeze three in, not all.
I believe that the four-day school week has created a situation that unfairly burdens the families that have no choice but to work on Fridays. It has negatively impacted my family in the fall days. Last school year, I paid more than $3,000 to teenagers and family members who babysit my two children on Fridays. I don't believe that cramming the same curriculum into a shorter amount of times is the best way for very young children in particular to learn. There are no private service providers filling the gap on Fridays, appropriate all-day activities and programs for elementary and middle-school aged kids. On salt spring, because of the four-day school week, extracurricular activities are frequently scheduled on Fridays, making it impossible for my children to participate when they are with a babysitter, and I cannot get them to and find the activities, even if I can afford to pay with them. I would like to hear from all the candidates that positions on the four-day school week, and whether you intend to reevaluate its efficacy and investigate other options.
John?
Thank you for the question. The school board, and I'd like to thank the school board for initiating some research on the topic. Martin Blakesley conducted a research paper that's actually posted on the, on the district website that's, that's good reading. It, it gives a good overview of how complex the issue is. Ultimately, we want to get, I, I would like to see us return to five days. However, the reason and the rationale that's been presented to the board is that it's physically not possible, or we would be losing programs, and I, that, that concerns me as well. What, what I would say in this brief 30 seconds I have left is that there are recommendations in the Blakesley study. I thanked the board chair for, for the report, and that I, that I was looking forward to hearing back from the task force. This was back in February, and I, I haven't heard anything back from, from the, the task force or the chair in terms of what recommendations were going to be looked at in that report and what action was going to be taken, so that's something I would pursue if elected trustee.
Nancy?
I'm, I'm definitely interested in consulting with the community on a number of topics. I think it's time to, especially with the new board, to, as I mentioned earlier, put those cards on the table, be they school configuration, be they four-day week, program issues, and, and hear that community input. Now, I appreciate that Martin's report that was written contains quite a bit of information on that topic, and I think that does need to be reviewed and looked at, but I also think that the community input is, is, is pretty critical to a number of topics, because we see, if we see four-day week in isolation and not other options, then I think we're just having that conversation about what's wrong with it or what's right with that particular thing, because there may be other options for creating economies or generating revenue that we haven't thought about. So I would like to consult with the community and with students about it, because I think it's, it's, it is a conversation that needs to come up.
Ken?
I understand the board is obliged to, to vote on this arrangement each year, and when that comes up, and if I'm a trustee, I'll be very interested to take part in that debate and bring to that debate everything I can find out about the, how the community feels about it. When I was last on the board, I was responsible for the Fullfoot School and the Firwood School. I went to PAC meetings. I got pretty good insights into how people like yourself felt about it and the reasons they did. I'd bring that back to the board, but I'm pretty sure, maybe wrong, that the board has to reconsider this every year. It can't, it is not going to go away.
Rob?
Ken's right. We do consider it every year. I guess the unfortunate part of it is, and it's something that I've been thinking about recently, we consider it from a financial basis. We consider it because we want programs in our classrooms. Everything we do, I think, in this board is how can we get more money into the classrooms to ensure that students get as broad an array of programming as possible? And switching to a four-day school week made that possible thanks to the QP workers who took a pay cut. There were less buses running. We weren't running a water taxi an extra day a week. That was money that went to those things that just get people into the buildings, and then we could run more programs. I don't know if that's right. I mean, I'm lucky, and, and it, it hasn't affected me in the same way that it, that it affects you. And on an annual basis, we, we will continue to research it, and we'll make the decision. Once again, it's one of those right and correct decisions.
Thank you, Rob. One question here, and then here. Nancy, go ahead.
I think it's all really good, kind of great ideas, but I think we can't forget that we are seriously underdone, and as one of the advocacy pieces that some districts have, have done in the past is, I'd like just to call attention to it, is to submit a needs budget alongside a compliance budget. Would you be willing to do that if you were a local trustee?
Sure, would like to. Nancy?
Sorry. Nancy first.
You go first, Nancy.
I do know that a number of boards do submit the needs budget along with the balanced budget, and I don't have a problem with doing that. I think it's very clear that the needs budget is different from the other. I wouldn't break the law and, and not submit that balanced budget as well. So that's the distinction I would make, and many of you know in Cowichin, that did occur, and the board was fired. By signing up for this job, I agree to obey the law.
Nancy? Rob?
I, if it costs money to present a needs budget, it takes more money to do that, I don't support it. I think we have other ways to effectively advocate for an increased budget. If you're not willing to break the law, then you're not making enough of a stand, because it's just another piece of paper that the ministry will shred, and they'll look at your balanced budget, because that's what you submitted. It, it comes down to those things where you're asking the board to show you as a community that you support, that we support public education, and that it seems as though our words are not enough, and I'm sorry about that. I will continue to be a vocal advocate, but I don't support a needs-based budget, because it will take time and it's money we don't have to spend.
Thank you, Rob. John?
It could be an excellent tool for advocacy, to, to highlight where are the areas that we are not receiving funding. I, I think that we, the secretary treasurer, whether they have the time, and it's determined that that's the best way to spend those dollars to advocate, that, that's a decision that would, that would need probably more discussion in my mind. Before we get to that point, I think just having more open, open and transparent view into our current budget cycle would be a good start, so that people know where the dollars are going. So having a dedicated webpage on our district site to have the previous year's budgets and versus actuals and the audited statements, and also what the process is for the public to give feedback to, to that budget process, so that it can be inclusive and people can have a chance to actually speak to the items that, that are our needs, what are our needs in the community, and, and having that process opened up, I think would be, would be a very good start.
I'm afraid I'm not familiar with the concept of a needs budget. It sounds really interesting. I'll certainly do my best to find out more about it and give you my answer then.
Thank you, Ken, and the last question.
Over the last five years, the amount of administrative staff working at our school board office has grown, while our student population has not. I'd like to know what you would do to minimize these costs and make sure that as much of our educational money ends up directly in the cost of the school.
Sounds like a good question for B.C. Perry's, too. Who would like to answer that one? Nancy?
I'll, I'll start, and, and this is a common question in, in boards across the province, I believe, and in smaller districts, and I would say even, you know, slightly larger districts than this one, there's a base level of administration that's required. Now, you know, I can't say, I'm not sure what grew, because I haven't been in the district recently. I, I'm not sure what grew and that you have concerns with, but it is very complicated, because you, you, it, it's like you still have to heat and light buildings, no matter how many kids are in it. You still have to pay people, you have to answer the phones, you have to do the dispatch, you have to do the, the things of the work, and it doesn't mean that you can just reduce by the same amount. It never really works that conveniently. And so, again, I'd have to have, have a look at what expanded here and, and see that, but I do know that it, it doesn't work as smoothly as, as it should. So, so I appreciate the concern, though, I do.
Rob?
Sure. I think that the, the changes that have happened in the, in the senior administration are due to the need for foresight in moving forward in a district. If you run on a shoestring, and you only have one person in charge of one thing, and that person chooses to leave the district for other work, or retire, or whatever, who will fill that space, and will it be filled quickly and efficiently? I approve of the changes that have been made in the administrative office, but we don't take it lightly, because, as I've said before, almost every decision we make is, how can we ensure the most money stays in the classrooms? And so it's, it's a balancing act, and, and I think that the decisions that were made were made to ensure that we have best continuity in our board office.
Ken?
Well, I was asking Tom Gray in, in the maintenance department this afternoon about the plan to digitize the heat controls in most of our elementary schools, all of them, to save money and as a green initiative, and he explained to me how it works. It does cost more to install it, but once it's running, the money is saved. In order to get the money to do that, he's had to fill out an awesome amount of paperwork for the government, which wants to know every detail about any plans a board has in requesting more money to make it more efficient from an energy point of view. So it seems to me there's a whole mountain of paper that has to be filled out these days for the bureaucrats in Victoria, so that a board can operate efficiently. I suspect there's something to do with that.
John?
It's a, it's a very good question. I don't feel I have quite enough knowledge to know what the benchmarks are percentage-wise administrative to, to support, to teaching staff, to, to be able to assess that. I think that ultimately, this is where the board needs to go to, to a higher level, 30,000 feet, and say, where are we going? What is our vision? What are, what is our mission? What are our values? What are our goals? And work down from there to say, is more admin staff or less admin staff going to achieve that, that plan? And that, that's how it can be weighed, because it can be very complex, because administrative staff in many cases can make things more efficient, in other cases, it can add a lot of bloat. So it, it really depends on, on where we're, where we're trying to go, and whether that, that, the way that it's allocated is going to, to support those goals.
Thank you, John. That completes our question-answer period from the floor, so each candidate now, using the same order we did at the beginning, John will be first, will speak for two minutes to again state their case.
Thank you, Harold. I'd like to close by saying both our society and our challenged planet depend on innovative solutions for a rapidly changing world. Our young people, properly educated, will in time provide many of these solutions. properly educated, will in time provide many of these solutions. I'm running for school trustee in the hopes of helping to provide that kind of education. As trustee, I would work hard on the community's behalf and be committed to four points. First is to visibly and vocally advocate for increased funding of education while providing careful stewardship of our available financial and human resources. Two, to work toward a community-based strategic plan, including mission, vision, set of values, goals, that are in the best interest of all of our stakeholders and community. The third is to be an advocate for a regular arms-length review of both existing and proposed programs, reviews that will help keep both teachers and administrators focused and on track. And four, I would draw on my experience as a manager and as a director of other mission-based organizations and aim to achieve policy-based governance in support of student achievement. Thank you again for being here tonight. I'm sure we all agree, no time is better spent than time that's devoted to the education of our children. And I would greatly appreciate your support when you go to the voting booth. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rob?
Thank you all for being here and for taking the time to show your interest in public education and your frustrations in public education. As a school trustee, I try to listen at all times and to absorb your statements, your emotions, your feelings, and to then reflect them into the best decisions that will be made. I believe that whatever is happening on the provincial level, we'll do our best in this district, and I want to be a part of that. I felt, I explained to the middle school students that being a trustee is a lot like being a middle school student in that you're trying your best to be awesome, but you're not in charge of how much money you have to do that. And you've got a lot of outside influences that are telling you you should be doing it differently. In the Gulf Islands, we manage to be awesome with all the things that are against us, whether it's ferries or underfunding or water taxis. We do it to the best of our ability. And I'm so thankful to the staff that work so hard. And I hope that you will allow me to participate in the discussion of where this district should go in the future for the next four years, where I think we can do a lot of great things for each student and create lifelong learners in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Nancy?
Thank you, Harold. Yes, I'd like to thank all of you for coming as well and thank my competitors here for their great evening. Today, I was at the Remembrance Day ceremony in the gym, and some of you were probably there and heard the three girls singing. And I sat back and I thought to myself, man, this is what it's all about, is these amazing students in this district, from the kindergarten kids to the grade 12 kids, unbelievable kids, creative, smart, funny, athletic, brilliant. And I saw that firsthand when I was principal, but when I was a teacher as well. This is a very, and Rob has said it as well, it's a very unique community and deserving of the best education system that we can provide. And to be honest, we're pretty close to that. I think we have outstanding schools, excellent teachers, and I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of other schools. And I can tell you, this is pretty darn good. So, we can beat ourselves up a lot and say, oh, this or oh, that, but it's pretty strong. And I admire everyone who has such a commitment. And I have an amazing amount of energy to contribute to that because of what I see. So, I bring to the table a great deal of experience in education. I've gone through the historical period. I'm here now. I know about the B.C. Ed plan. I know what's going on with personalized learning. I know there are controversies around that. But I'm all about student learning and student achievement, which translates into, in my view now, into student success. Are we providing the best we can so students can be successful? I think that's what we're, at the core, that's what we're all about. And I have a record of ensuring that that happens. And so, I will promise as a trustee to do my best to allocate resources in order to see that continue and take us from fully meeting expectations to exceeding expectations.
Thank you, Nancy.
Chairman, Harold, it's been a long evening. All I'd like to say is thank you so much for coming out. Thank you for your wonderful questions. I've certainly learned a lot from my colleagues here. And it's been a very interesting evening, and I think a very positive evening for public education in school District 64. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you all. And I'd like to certainly thank everybody for coming tonight. On behalf of Salt Spring Literacy and for Letha for looking after the clock. And these are your four strong candidates. I can't change my mind. I've already voted. I have to go into Terry this week. But it was a very good evening, and the quality of questions from the audience, I thought, were very superior. So, thank you all, and this concludes the event this evening.
And thank you to the sound man. He's done a great job tonight.
Thank you.